We're gonna just start now this seven with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we are really excited that we could all get together for the first time. I don't know if planning boards, the two planning boards have ever done a joint meeting before.
I've been on since ninety something and this is the first one.
Well, we made history today. I know that the village boards used to do joint meetings, but with everything that's going on with planning and land use and also with train, we wanted to maybe see if we can collaborate with some training opportunities at the local level. Thought it would be a great idea to get together, so we appreciate you guys coming. We videotape our meetings, just so everybody knows this is being recorded and it will be on our fancy YouTube channel that we have, The Village of Virgin, if you wanna.
Okay, can we say that?
If you ever wanna go back and watch any of our meetings or all of our board meetings are also recorded and are on our YouTube channel.
We're up there.
Let's just all introduce ourselves. I'll start and Renee Barraro, I'm the Planning Board Chair. I also work in the office, some of you know me that way. I've been the Planning Board Chair for, I'm not sure how long, how long? Four years, five years, I don't know. I think five years, cause.
Six years.
Six, six years. Yep, so six years.
I'm Todd Cargill, also on the Parce Committee and the Tree Board.
David Burke.
Vicki Alquist.
Carol Walker.
I'm Kate Milliman.
Barb Center, Secretary.
Extraordinary. Yeah, extraordinary at the end, Barb.
And here is Mike, I'm the Chairman of the Planning Board.
Mark Gerhardy.
Dominic Camillo.
Cindy Anderson.
Kim Van Lee.
Kathy Woodbalk.
Mark Swanson.
Awesome, awesome. Well, we just have one little piece of business, we just have to approve our meeting minutes and then we can get into some discussion on some things that are happening. I don't know if any of you guys got an agenda back there, but there's a couple of things happening that affects both the town and the village. We just kinda wanna get what your feedback is on what the town's gonna do, some feedback on what we're gonna do, what we plan to do, things of that nature. So first off, I wanna welcome Vicki Alquist back to the Planning Board. She was the Planning Board Chair before she went to the village board and now she's back as an alternate. So, welcome back Vicki.
Thank you.
Second order business, we have minutes from December fifteenth. We had a public hearing for a minor subdivision which ended up not happening, so. It's a brief paragraph. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Alright, so, did, do we have the handout for your draft agreement about that? So have you gotten this Gary?
The draft agreement?
Yes.
Yeah, we sent it to everybody.
Okay, so you guys have seen it. What are your thoughts on it? Like is the town?
So far, everybody's in favor.
So the Planning Board is.
Because it streamlines everything, makes it easier for us to get there for sure.
Yeah.
So. And, and there's some stuff that we send to the county, I think. Why?
Yeah. I looked it over too, I don't know if everybody's had a chance to look it over, but there's, I don't know how many points there are. There's fourteen, five of them are for ZBA. Setbacks and the like, and then. We, when I reviewed it, I, we went with our new zoning law. We try to streamline some of the things because I'm sure you find this with some of your projects. You know, if the people across the street don't wanna make that a photography studio and it's a change of use to a hair salon, it has to go to the county and it's just, you know, it's a two or three month process. When they can just like, let's get going. So, we streamlined some things in our zoning law, which we'll kinda touch on in a minute. But, well, I think we're, I don't know how the rest of the planning board feels, but I did not think any of those were anything that I wouldn't.
Exactly. One of my objections has always been that the farther authority is from the people, the less responsive it is. In, in all my time on the planning board, there's only been one instance where the county disapproved something that we had done and we had right to override it, so we did.
Yep, yep.
And that's twenty some years that it went on, so.
Yeah.
Have we ever had any issues or anything that you've sent to the county?
Uh, nothing's been disapproved in my time, there have been approval or modifications. Sometimes we have followed them, sometimes we felt that that wasn't necessary. I mean, this is going back, I was the secretary before I was on the planning board. So, I mean, this is going back at least ten years, it's just really been modifications. Some of them I thought, you know, looking back on them were appropriate and, you know, some the board did not agree with, so. So I think this is great, I know that Felipe is very much excited for all of the villages and towns to adopt this.
This is the stuff that they go through every month, it's like their meeting must be four hours long.
Yeah. And, and like you said, much of it is very minor things.
Right.
For them especially when they're seeing large developments and commercial properties. I mean, to see a change of use in the Village of Virgin or the, something small in the Town of Virgin.
Yeah, who cares?
I, I'm glad to hear that, cause, you know, it, it's nice that the village and town are cohesive on that. We will recommend to our board as well with a letter that, that is our recommendation, so, that's good.
Is this something that the County Planning Board drafted?
County Planning Board drafted it, yeah, Felipe sent it to the, it looked like only the Planning Board Chairs got it.
Well, no, cause I got a notice from Green.
Oh.
But I think the Town Board got it.
Our village board did not. I sent it on, but no. So. Yeah, that came from Felipe. When I talked to him about a month ago, they were working on it, so I knew it was coming. But the attorney had to look it over. Awesome. So, accessory dwelling units. Hot topic right now. We at the village, obviously you guys know we just do that with the zoning law. We actually have, it's a new use for us, we did adopt accessory dwelling units in our uses with, with stipulations. It needs a special permit, there's restrict, there's some restrictions. The accessory dwelling use language that Governor Hochul wanted to put in to the budget, which was eliminated thankfully for anybody who is a land use planning junkie.
Why was it so specific? It was incredibly detailed.
It was incredibly detailed, I'm not sure.
There must be a backstory to it.
I think, I think the backstory and Todd, I think Todd, you've probably done more research, cause I see him in article here. But, they, it, it really was geared around train, areas where there's lots of travel. They're still pushing that legislation actually, like down Long Island Railroad, Amtrak, all those places. They really, why, I, why the language was so specific and why it was in the budget, I really am not sure.
Cause a lot of the wording here pertains to, you know, people that are leasing or renting these accessory dwellings.
Now, does the town have accessory dwelling units in your current code?
I don't, well.
As an accessory use?
We've only had one instance up on Second Road where the people wanted to build a small temporary home for a father-in-law.
Okay. Oh, okay.
And the husband and wife had a fight, it didn't happen, but, but that's the only.
I'll tie these things back.
And then, I think they were committing.
Oh, it was. It was, that's interesting. I think, I think one of my biggest concerns, if, and if any legislation passes for us is the setback that there really isn't.
Right, but there was none.
There was none.
Anytime New York State tells us we have to do something, I'm very angry, cause there's always an ulterior motive.
I agree, especially with land use. I, I had heard a year ago that I had heard the rumblings of the land use and the, the single-family homes. There were, there were a few articles, it was, they started talking about it with the infrastructure plan, but I don't think it ever made it in the infrastructure plan where they're really, if you have new zoning, they don't want it to be a residential one home, they want it to at least be a two. I think that's still kind of looming out there with the, the accessory dwelling unit. For us here in the village, that's a little problematic if the development ever goes in up over where the main estates was. Currently, we do have a low-density residential, which is really one-family homes. With some more square footage on the land. I don't know, do you have any other things that you found, Todd?
A couple of different things. Reading through this, are we gonna have to go line by line and pick ours apart to fit their mold? Because what I'm reading here is if a local government has an existing accessory dwelling unit ordinance that fails to meet the requirements of this section, that local law shall be null and void. And then to give you, I think, what it says, it's got ninety days, with the ninety days receipt of the local government's law or ninety days after expiration of the time to submit said local law. And then it goes on to, you know, levying fines and things like that, so, interesting.
So, I wonder if they want us to pull it out as a separate local law? Is that, is that what you're reading?
And then another thing, they, they say here, the local government shall ensure that the accessory dwelling units are not counted towards the allowable residential density. Okay, listen, maybe in this sense.
It doesn't make any sense.
They don't count living in accessory dwelling units, don't count residential density? I, I don't, I don't understand that.
So it does sound like they want us to do a new local law. That would have to be done at the town and village level, village board level. I mean, obviously, like for us, we would probably draft it and then send it, is that what you guys do?
Yeah.
You draft it and then they can make changes or whatever?
Well, actually, on the, like on the solar law, the lawyer drafted it, sent it out, and then we made our recommendations and changed the whole thing.
It's always a wagon, especially with land use.
Well, as Mark just pointed out to me, next to my ear, that he thinks this is all about immigration. There's a housing shortage in New York State. If you're gonna still have farming, you have to consolidate. So they're gonna try and push toward smaller homes, doubles.
Interesting.
Apartments.
I think there's also downstate, some special interest groups that are lobbying for increased population density for their groups.
Okay, alright.
And coupled with the exodus out of New York City due to COVID, there was a lot of migration of people out of the city into first-run suburbia, it kinda changed the population look quickly.
Yes.
And I think that's also.
Part of this.
Part of this.
So my understanding is that bill, that bill's dead, that one?
Oh.
Is it? I don't know, I think it is, but I think that there's more coming. I think in the budget, it was, I forget exactly the terminology, but when she took it out of the budget, it kind of died. But, which was recent, which was recent, but that doesn't mean that's not gonna come back.
Yeah, I'm sure it will.
I'm sure it will too, it was only.
It would look different when it comes back though.
Yes.
And not in a good way?
No. It will be more complicated, but good to be aware of it, good to know how you guys feel about it too. I mean, obviously, in our comprehensive plan, which we share, that's not really something that we want. For us, we included accessory dwelling units in the village because we're trying to utilize a lot of the bigger homes and the bigger, like people have barns and things that aren't really being utilized. We wanted people to be able to have a little more liberty with their properties, to be able to put an apartment in there and rent it. But again, you have to have a special use permit, it has to come to Planning Board, it's not just like here, go. We have somebody who took advantage of that as soon as our zoning law was passed for her fan, her parents who are ailing. She has a garage that's bigger than her house. So, she was able to put an apartment in there, they can be right there, she can take care of them, they are still, you know, able to have some freedoms, so that's the type of thing that we saw when we were talking about accessory dwelling unit.
Yeah, I kinda think this whole thing is geared, like you said, more downstate than it is the rural end of the state that we're in.
Yeah. Well, something to keep our eye on for sure. So just, you know, some happenings in the village. Obviously, everyone knows that we just updated our zoning law, it was a hot topic around. One of the reasons that we updated our zoning law was, our zoning law was very old, highly unreadable. I couldn't even read it, like somebody would come in, I couldn't even make head or tails of it, made no sense. It was not organized properly, it's done in the eighties. We worked with Barton Le Judas, some consultants, I don't know if any of you. Yeah, John Steinmetz, I don't know if anybody's worked with John Steinmetz. He's from, actually originally from Leroy, he's done, he's actually working on the Leroy Main Street Grant at the moment. He is the consultant working over there on that. He was a principal at Barton and Le Judas and he was our main contact there. But, we had a couple of things that we were really focused on with our zoning law, it was a two-year process. And, one of them was that our commercial portion of our zoning law allowed for some things to happen within the village that we didn't really wanna have happen. Some folks went to training that I think Felipe did actually, and it was like, were you there Gary?
Yeah.
Oh, it was the exercise on the Dollar General?
Yeah.
Yes, so it was a Dollar General exercise, can, would this Dollar General be able to go where in your village? And when they came back, they're like, yeah, it could go anywhere, it could be at the post office, it could be here, it could be there. So then, it was like a big red flag, we have to address this zoning law. And once our consultants started to really look into our zoning law, it came to light that we had a real issue, especially in the traditional village area, like right down here with the older houses. Like Vicki and I live next door to each other, our houses are, you know, eighteen, late eighteen hundreds. And if our, either one of our homes burned down, we could not rebuild on the footprint based on the restrictions for setbacks and lot sizes. So that was like one of the big red flags for our consultants early on. They're like, you need, we need to break down your residential areas so that if that did happen, people could rebuild on the footprint, especially in, you know, historic villages. So, that was one of the main things, we also wanted to simplify the process. We wanna try to make it as quick as possible for the applicants, especially if it's something simple. So that's why this is so awesome for us. And we really did want to, there's a lot of language in here for commercial. We felt like we really wanted to protect the integrity of the village based on the comprehensive plan. And there's a lot of language, if somebody comes in with a new commercial business, that it needs to look like old historic village, it has to have shrubbery, we need, we wanna keep the green, things of that nature. So, those are just some of the highlights. I don't know if there's any other, you know, we added accessory dwelling units and we did break it up so you, you could actually read it. It's, it's easier, we have lots of charts and whatnot. But, we spent a lot of time on that, I know it's been kinda, people have been talking about it, but there are some really fantastic, the meat of it really was bringing new businesses in. We rezoned a couple of areas to bring some neighborhood commercial businesses in. And, we're real, we're really pleased with it. I don't know if you guys have any questions or if, I don't know how old yours zoning law?
I worked on it, so, can't be working twenty years. It was probably in the early two thousand.
Early two thousand, yeah, first was in the eighties, so it was a little older. It was a little older. So, we're pretty happy about that. We also have, obviously, our Main Street Grant has been going on. That is, that has been completed. Now we just, you know, have to do paperwork for the state like every other day with any grant. But we were able to utilize quite a bit of the grant money for a lot of these businesses down here. I think everybody has noticed that a lot of these buildings have been updated. We also have one more big project going on, eighty-three South Lake, that used to be the Italian restaurant way back in the day. That is getting a major facelift, it is, they're converting, so it was the restaurant that it was a sauce place. So they're converting that into apartments, but in the site plan review, we asked them to do a lot of the zoning.
Said to one of his Tonys, I believe, Kat Tonys?
Yeah. Coach Tonys, yep, yep, they moved up to, you guys saw them probably. So, we've asked them to do a significant amount of exterior work, including getting rid, making a front lawn, there'll be sidewalks and shrubs and new siding, so we're really hopeful that that's gonna help the look for the village and the town when you come in. Yes, our code officer was up there all the time.
That one came off the blocks up there.
I know, we were all like, woo! Um, that's our, that's what we, we're actually kinda quiet right now, we're very busy during the Main Street Grant, working on the zoning law, but that's kinda what's happening in the village. Anything happening in the town?
No, pretty much just up in the, in the, uh, commercial zone.
In the industrial, yeah.
Uh, there's a fifty thousand square foot, I guess you're going on Hank Parker. We've just barely finished the hundred thousand square foot building. And of course, the work at Liberty Home. And our, our process, we're very business-wise.
Yeah.
If you go in other towns, that project would've been at least a year.
Yeah.
I think we got them four, four years.
Yeah, that's awesome. That's awesome to hear. I think that in a small town like this, that you, we, we're the same, I mean, we want you to do it right, but we don't wanna hold you back.
Right. I mean, that, s- some of these town engineers, which are just, maybe what, um, just keep, cause it's been an inertia of something.
Yeah.
And they won't let it go. In the grand scheme of things, it's pretty much irrelevant. I have a hard time with the, uh, archaeological stuff.
Oh, yeah.
Because every society in existence has been built on another culture. And finding one little arrowhead shouldn't be enough to stop anything. I found four arrowheads on San Joe next to the gun club for my property. Everywhere, but, why is finding an arrowhead so important? They, they, uh, there's a section, or a dog, where the, uh, maybe that's a, uh, car, make sure it is. Auto action.
Oh, auto action.
Yeah. Because they found some farmer's dirtbag. Really? It was a dump. Yeah.
It was, wasn't it like maple syrup making things or something?
Yeah, it was, yeah, it was.
Really?
Kids from making maple syrup. I don't give a.
Yeah, that's right.
Could you imagine being in Europe and they told you, if you find something, you gotta stop? You couldn't dig in Europe without hitting something, Roman, probably.
See, we don't have that, cause we don't ever, no one ever breaks ground here. So that, that's fascinating. So it, does it, it just stops the work?
Oh yeah.
Really?
Cause they, they force you to do it.
Really?
Which they do. Fortunately, that was done in two thousand eight, I guess they did the whole area. But we had to get verification from the archaeological people in Homburg. But surprisingly, they did, pretty quick one.
Really?
So it had already been searched.
Right. And there were three, three parcels that were of concern, that we had to cut out.
Really?
You can't do anything in there. Okay, you can't do anything in there, what, what purpose is this there? What are you gonna do with it, things about? Say, maybe I gotta do an archaeological thing? Could it build a museum for it, or I, I don't know?
Do you guys have the Hank Parker expansion, the Liberty expansion, is there more room up there?
Yes.
There is, okay.
Are they gonna put a road out the back?
Out, uh, to nineteen.
Yeah.
To nineteen, yeah.
That is just for, it's supposed to be just for.
For which?
The Liberty.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay, well that would make sense actually.
Because we.
Keep them locked up.
We already had the neighbors come for whenever we complained.
Where, where would it be on?
It's, there's, uh, the yellow house right behind.
Yeah.
Seven eleven.
Right.
Then there's a space, that's where it is.
Oh, in between.
In between those two houses.
Okay, yeah. I think so, yeah, I think our alignment have already set goals.
Right.
Up there. So, interesting.
I'm surprised that, uh, you still have electric capacity and.
We do.
And sewer.
We do, actually. We, we actually have enough for a development.
Really?
Up at Main Estates, which we're hoping someday will happen. We wrote our, we rezoned it to protect the village residents. There was some controversy when Main Estates, I was just coming in as secretary, I don't even know how many years ago that was.
It's a long time.
Fifteen, fifteen years ago when Main Estates was.
I think more than that.
More than that, twenty maybe? Um, there was some controversy as to the plans and that's when he passed away, the gentleman who was, who owned the property, his wife, wife or mother?
Mother.
Mother, still owns it. But, there.
They had two apartment buildings done yet, too, didn't they?
Uh, I don't know.
I think so.
Did they?
I think so, uh, on the other side.
Oh, on the other side? Yeah, but.
Could you explain to me what the bottomed foots of a big development would be to the Town of Virgin or the Village?
To the Village, to the Village, it would certainly be tax-based. If, if that did get developed, you know, it would bring more kids into the school, hopefully bring more businesses here. That is really.
So if you look at our neighboring town, going to Orleans County, which they waterized about twenty years ago.
Okay.
They thought the same thing. They brought about three thousand residents into their village or into their town. Their taxes are the highest it could possibly be, the school system's gone in the toilet. The bus system's bad. I don't know, rosy, bringing people in.
Yeah, yeah, no, understood, understood. I, currently, currently, Mrs. Philewick still owns it and there's no, several developers have come to us about it, but nothing has ever happened with the property, so. It's residential property being farmed at the moment. It's residential property being farmed at the moment. Um, what it's not going to be is a solar farm, because we don't have any ground solar in the Village of Virgin with our new zoning law.
That's New York State.
Well, you do understand the five megawatts, right?
What, what part of that?
So, if somebody came into your town or village, but five megawatts plus, you have no say. That's state. Cause, what do they tell you, those?
Right.
I think that's only like forty acres.
Yeah.
Yeah, don't get forty acres.
Yeah. No. So.
How many acres is the main estate?
Um, I'd have to go look honestly, I don't know, what do you think? Yeah, I'm not either.
Right here.
Right, yeah.
Still not gonna know.
Yeah, I, I would have to go look and see what it was. And I, I am also not very good at that kind of.
That's a question, how many acres in the state is?
How many acres on the Main Estates?
But don't forget, he's have to run across the street too.
Yeah.
Cause he's got the apartment building across the street.
The one that says we live, is that, is that, is that this thing?
Yeah.
Across from the main house.
Yeah.
It's across the street.
Kind of weird too. They lived up in there.
Was in the village, when it decided to develop. Because they wanted to do it, um, more, and so.
The other one, the classroom. There has some farm.
Yeah.
The electric association doesn't allow the village to.
That's correct.
Yeah. It's a village, that's the town.
Yeah, interesting, yeah, so.
I think that's the village.
So.
That's kinda size of some property, but some of the.
Uh, so, yeah. We were, we were just discussing, um, whether or not that would affect us, if it, we don't think it's enough acreage, plus we also have the electric company, which.
Right.
Yeah.
Can't take the electricity.
We can't take the electric.
We're contractually obligated, you know, to not produce our own electricity.
Oh, yes, we cannot. Because we own our own municipal or municipal electric.
Only we're part of the association.
Correct. Correct. So. So, yeah, so, that's kinda what's happening in the town. You guys been pretty quiet, or is the, are things starting to pick up now?
We're always quiet.
Are you? It's quiet?
Last summer was, uh, I think we canceled a couple of things.
Yeah.
Just, uh, a lot, a lot of people with money are moving out.
Yeah, yeah, our hu- our housing market is hot here though.
Right.
I mean, we have a small house on Clinton Street that's listed, I think at one ninety, and I have seen, I mean, walking my dog, I've seen four people looking at it already.
Right.
It's higher than one ninety? Oh.
We got two real estate people here.
Oh, is it? I thought it was, I don't know what it's listed at.
It's listed at one eighty-nine.
One eighty-nine, yeah.
It's other contract already.
Is it? Yeah, I mean, it was on the market for like a week. Yeah, it's, it's hot in the village for sure. Yes, Barb's gonna be a neighbor. So one of the last things that, that, we're always struggling to get training. Because a lot of the training's done during the day.
It's apparent.
It is, uh, in the past, in the past, the village has put together trainings with like the Town of Virgin, Village of Churchville, and had somebody come out at night and have it more locally geared to things, I, I, I personally have taken like a bunch of trainings, Barb's taken like fourteen times as many as me, so she's probably heard it all. Uh, uh, they're either repetitive or not applicable to us.
You heard someplace in the way about Rip Redd?
Yeah.
Okay, what's that doing for me?
And I, I found lately that the trainings are very specific, and many times not applicable at all to our region. So, I just wondered if, you know, the Town of Virgin Planning Board would like to get together with us, and maybe we can try to put a training together for like all of us that would work for us, the time, maybe in the evening, so we can all get our training hours without having to spend, there is a local workshop. I don't know if any of you guys go to those, Friday, May thirteenth, at, uh, GCC. Um, I'm, we're not, I'm not going, I.
That's the, that's the spring one that used to be out in Bushnell's Basin?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, it used to be there?
At, at Bushnell's Basin?
They do the spring one in Bushnell's Basin, they do the fall one in the T A, this one's at GCC.
Yeah.
Have we seen, is this the one that we saw, the, have we seen the agenda for that one yet?
No.
Was that the fall one?
They, they, that was the fall one. This just came out this afternoon.
Oh, this just came out this afternoon, the fall one, we didn't find anything applicable to us, honestly. It was very specific into like things that we don't even need out here. Um, so Friday, May thirteenth, it's an all-dayer. But, um, you know, I'd be willing to try to work on getting a training put together, maybe Felipe can come out and do a training for us on something we would like to have done.
He did that once before on a Seeker, didn't he?
Yeah, I did Seeker.
We all went to Leroy, I think.
Was it Leroy?
Leroy.
I think we also did one at the Methodist.
We did, that's the one when we all got together. That was a long time ago.
Was it?
Yeah, it seemed like yesterday, doesn't it? We, uh, I put that one together with, um, the mayor. But, um, if you guys would be interested in that, maybe we can work together to try to get something here.
Sure.
Um, anything in particular? You're looking at?
Cemetery.
Cemetery?
She's asking where the main estate is.
Oh. I thought that was the subject.
We're not doing cemetery.
Um, usually our, our main concern is the lead.
Maybe we could, maybe if it had Felipe do like hot topics. Yeah.
Yeah, hot topics in the county.
Yeah. John was good for that, I wonder if we could get him here.
Does he still do it for his new company?
I don't know, maybe.
Could be.
John Stein, that's would be a great one for all the land use. They were very, like, they were incredibly knowledgeable about stuff that was going on and, um, looking forward. Um, they actually helped us with accessory dwelling units and, and a couple of other parts of our zoning law that we didn't even think about. So maybe he would do it. Anybody else have anything they'd like to see?
Might even have some insight into this lead issue as well.
Yeah. Mm-hmm, I'm sure he would. Maybe Marley could. What's a good time for you guys, like, when do you usually meet?
We usually meet the last Thursday, seven.
Yeah. Last, so you meet the same time as us?
Mm-hmm.
It'd be awesome if we could get two trainings, and then we can all be done with our four hours.
Sign me up.
Couple of them, the summer should be quiet for us, I know.
Right.
So.
Also the stuff we, I'm getting my, just the, the land separation of.
Yeah.
Or subdivision of property.
Right.
Right.
Always gotta be careful when you send out the notice, cause everyone thinks subdivision, oh.
Main Estates.
Separation of lands, oh.
Did we figure out how many acres it was, no?
Forty-one point seven two.
Forty-one point seven two.
Really?
Is that both sides of the road, Mark? Cause there's, they own the other side of the road too.
Like you said, on our, can't recognize that.
I know they still farm, the Christmas horse is still there.
Yeah. This is just, we talked about Bud Havel, right?
Yes.
What they call Bud, yeah. Yeah.
So that one piece is forty-seven.
Yeah, yeah, he died.
Yes.
That's why I think that's true.
Yep.
Oh, and you're right, and another fourteen point three on the other side of the road.
So close to sixty.
When, when you look at, you know, developing, and we look at this too, you, you look at developing any real estate, if you look at the assessment, proposed assessment for whatever units are gonna be apartments or houses, you just need to do the math, it's simple math, take the first student, and you'll find that you're subsidizing every new house in Virgin. We don't build large enough homes, we don't build expensive enough homes to, to, to get over that hump, we're not in Pittsburgh. So, every house, every kid you put in here, it just is another burden on somebody else. That's, that's really what it is, so if you look at your school tax, your town is insignificant, right? It's a school tax, but that's a burden in this town. So, it's, it really should be, uh, and we've tried to make it part of our thought process, does this benefit the town entirely or not?
Right.
So, most of the time you'll find out, it doesn't benefit anybody in the town, it only benefits those people. And if you ask the a- a- average person out there, you wanna subsidize another ten homes, then they'll tell you no way. So, it's something to think about when you're working out subdivisions.
Certainly the way, uh, different way to look at it.
Well, it's, it's, it's real, you look at your, look at your tax though.
Right.
And you pay, I think you pay an extra village tax here as well, right?
We do.
So.
And sewer debt.
And sewer taxes everywhere.
Yeah.
We, we don't meet the criteria, if you go to the Monroe County suburbs, they do. So they can put a unit up, assess it for four hundred thousand, it breaks their threshold. Our per student capital of the cost is no different than theirs. So it's a big, it's a big number to get over that hump.
Mm-hmm.
And I can tell you, where we live, I don't know anybody in favor of more people coming here. And that's a big reason.
Yeah, it is.
Well, big people in the town, per country.
Yeah, yeah.
I have a lot of land, cause I don't want anybody to run me.
Right, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Well, there's, there's nothing on the horizon right now there, so. They'll be farming it again. They'll be farming it again, and woodchucks will be coming into my yard.
My yard.
Yes, through vacation.
A refuge.
That's all right, they're cute. Thank, that, thank you, that's a good conversation.
There should be more conversation, right, when, when D U R's planning boards think about that.
Yes. We've never had, um, obviously, we don't have land here other than that to be developed into something, so, we have not had to really practically think about it other than to just rezonate, right? We have not had to have that kind of discussion, so it's good, it's good to have the discussion there.
Right.
We, we have minimal new anything. We just have repurposing. With repurposing, I think there's only one or two vacant lots here.
I didn't, I didn't know that in the village, something.
Yes, yeah. There's.
Yeah.
One there.
And I don't want one.
And there's one on Rochester Street.
Oh, I know where it is.
Yeah, there's a gazebo on it, I guess.
Oh, okay, yeah.
There must've been a house there at some point.
Um, I don't, really, I think there was, I think it was subdivision.
It was, uh,
Oh, okay.
That was, uh, Mrs. Morley. The woman with the house to the east. And she owned that lot.
Yeah. Yeah, so there's only two vacant lots at the moment. And one in, one where the fire was.
Yeah, yeah.
That has not ever been rebuilt.
Uh, there's two right where I am.
Are there two?
There's my lot and Bob Patterson's.
Bob Patterson's is landlocked. So, it can't be developed unless, I believe, unless, is he landlocked?
No.
He's not landlocked?
No.
Somebody's landlocked.
Leroy has raped, raped his driveway.
Oh, okay, so he does, there's a landlocked parcel over there, so that must be somebody else's, uh, Bausch maybe?
Bob Bausch owns that eight acres back in there.
Right, yeah, so there's three. There's, but not many. So we don't have to worry about arrowheads.
Those are tough, they're right by the tree.
I'm sure there is, sure there is, uh, well, that was awesome discussion, we really appreciate it. Anybody else have anything wanna share, wanna talk about, dying to know? I don't know.
Is everyone happy that the water lines are starting to go wind?
Oh, yeah, no?
I was gonna ask about where are the water lines going?
See, you know, there's, there's another thing about the town. A lot of us didn't want that.
Where are the water lines going through the town?
Everywhere.
Everywhere, like?
Yeah, they're taking, they wanna one hundred percent cover Tennessee town.
So they're phasing it in though, right, and are there phases, or like, like, this is the face, we're the face?
Yeah. Stop down this road.
I see piles of them everywhere. And that goes on the taxes, yes?
Yeah.
Yeah. Thirty-eight years you get.
Thirty-eight years you get the payment.
Really? And that went out to bond, bam, was that the water?
On the bond, borrowed money.
Yeah. So everyone's getting water and their taxes are going up.
Water bill.
And a water bill, Monroe County water, right?
Yeah.
And then the builders can like get more.
Then you gotta pay to connect, yeah, it's, it's not cheap.
Really? Wow.
And the houses come.
If you don't pay that initially, uh, it costs like six hundred dollars if you decide to connect one. And you're still gonna pay the debt service whether you.
Whether or not. So that's happening on the town, huh?
Yeah.
So you think that you're gonna influx of people who wanna build after, after the water comes in?
Probably will. Every town, it's not, so longer it goes down.
Well, that's true. Really, so anybody who's.
Look at any town you want, you go through all the ones that have tried it.
Really?
If you ask the residents who've been there, who grew up there, nobody's happy about it.
Cause it's not a rural town when you have a house every hundred fifty feet, it's a, right. I declared, I declared it's a mess. Yes.
Who's supposed to?
Yeah, see, we've all, we've had waters since.
So maybe once every?
So we're water.
Six years?
Right.
Once every four and a six years?
We got in before this.
That was a dump.
Yeah.
Yeah. Not everybody wanted it when it got to the end of the road.
Yeah. Anybody else have anything? Anybody in the village pointing to work? Well, um, I, I, I thought this was great, I mean, I, I learned a lot about the town today, I learned a lot about other things, um. We'll, we'll start looking into trainings, I'll get in touch with you, Gary, and maybe we can figure out a good time for everybody.